Everyone, as I mentioned earlier, we have one board member, Mr. Jubelier, who has an excused absence, and we have three board members who are joining us remotely, Ms. Duffy, Ms. Stern, and Ms. Solomon. I'd like to report on executive sessions. The board met in executive session on the following dates and discussed the following topics: Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, personnel, and Tuesday, June 27th, 2023, for personnel and legal. And with that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Bachelor, for his monthly report.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldman. Since we have a crowd here tonight, I don't usually have this full of an audience, so I will have a longer presentation. This is wonderful. I'm joking. I'll spare everyone a long remark. Actually, tonight, our focus is not only recognizing some of our students that have been just excelling, but also tonight is an opportunity to recognize our retirees, and we'll have some time to do that shortly. Even though the school year has ended, the learning continues in Radnor, our summer programs, many of them kicking off next week. You can see the dates for our extended school year program, our English Language Development Summer Program, our Summer STEM Academy, and our Summer Literacy Camp. We are excited to have our students involved in those programs, and we are so appreciative of our staff for their willingness to participate and make all of these programs possible, as well as some of the summer programming, as we look at some of our math classes and courses that are happening at the high school as well. So even though the school year is over, we still have learning continues here in Radnor. Moving on to the next slide, I just want to say congratulations to all of our students. We did had fun with an end-of-year video this year where our communications department went out and interviewed our fifth graders, our eighth graders, and our seniors, all those students who were in a transition year. And the communications department asked them, what's special about Radnor? And all those students were unscripted. Some of the students I know are with us who were in the video when they were some of the seniors were signing their yearbooks. They shared what's special about Radnor. And I think that's one of the things I just want to highlight is, in this picture collage, there's so many exciting things that happen at the end of the school year, so many things to celebrate among our students. But it's just so wonderful, too, to see all of our students and our staff and everyone who comes together at the end of the school year. One of the nice things about education is that each year we get to have an end of the school year, and then we get to take the summer, we get to regroup, and we get to come back, and we get to figure out how can we do it a little bit better next year. And that's one of the, I think, the wonderful things about our profession. There's so many things, but we had that opportunity, and we always get to end the year on such a high with so many of these celebrations. So just want to congratulate all of our students again and thank all of our staff for everything you do to make our school year possible and especially such a smooth end to the school year. And then some highlights and achievements, I just thought, for the school board and for our community, though I think a June meeting, as we've discussed, usually our meeting is not the last week of June, it's usually the week before. Next year, we're going to make sure that we do this meeting a little bit earlier. But there are so many things for us here in Radnor to celebrate. When we look at the success of our students, when we look at their successes in the classroom, we look at the arts, the theater, we look at sports, activities, there is so much that is happening with our kids. We talk about unlocking the potential in all of our students, and that takes the entire community. And this is just a small, little piece of some of the things that, again, when we ask the students what makes Radnor special, there's so much that makes Radnor special, but we wanted to just list those for the board and community. And then tonight, as I said, going to the next slide, we're going to be recognizing retirees. So I did group them, you know, five-plus years, and many of the people in this category have 15, 17, 18 years of service in this category. But we have many retirees tonight that are five-plus years, 20-plus years, you can see on this next slide, some of those retirees are with us here tonight, and then we have 30-plus years of service to Radnor. Each year when we pass our budget, and you look at our budget, 70% of our budget goes every year to personnel costs, its salaries, its benefits, its people. We are a people-intensive organization, we, you know, for who we hire and then who we're working with. We're working with people, young people, but we're working with young people from kindergarten to 12th grade and actually even pre-kindergarten. It is the people who make Radnor, it is those staff and their dedication and their service, the impacts they have with our kids, both the small, little things they do each day and the large things. When I look at the impacts that our staff, and I include everyone, when I'm looking in this staff, everyone plays an important role in our district, from support staff, and if I start listing support staff, I'll miss a category, from all of our support staff, our teachers, our administrative team, our coaches, every person who is employed here in Radnor has an opportunity to make a difference, make a difference in this organization, make a difference in the lives of kids by what they do and what they do each day, but also in one another. When you ask people, what is it that makes their job worthwhile, or what is it they love about their job, and you look at surveys, you often find out that people respond, no matter what organization they're in, it's the people they work with. And the people you work with make a huge difference, and these retirees tonight have made a huge difference. They've had a wonderful impact, so we're excited tonight to take a moment to recognize each one of them. And that concludes my remarks. That's about as brief as I get usually, so you guys are all very lucky, especially the students. And we have some recognitions for the students as well tonight, so.
Thank you, Dr. Bachelor, appreciate that. And with that, we're going to turn to the recognitions part of our agenda this evening, and it's just so wonderful to see so many people in the room. Dr. Bachelor didn't mention this, but we always create a standing invitation if after your recognition you want to hang around for the boring stuff, you're welcome to do that. But thank you so much for coming out on a hot, sticky, rainy June evening to fill our room with all of your accomplishments and give us a chance to celebrate all of you for the contributions you've made to our school district. So with that, I'm going to start off with the resolution honoring our retiring employees, and the recommended action is that the board adopts the following resolution. Upon the retirement of 24 employees after 543 years of faithful service to the Radnor Township School District and to the children of the community, the Board of School Directors hereby records its sincere appreciation and unreserved commendation for these years of diligent devotion to professional responsibilities. In public recognition of this service, this citation is presented by unanimous vote of the Board of School Directors at its meeting on June 27th, 2023, and is recorded in the proceedings of the meeting. And with that, I'd like to call up our Human Resources Director, Mr. Todd Stitzel, who will take the recognition from here.
Thank you, President Goldman. You know, I am so honored to work with the staff at Radnor. You know, we have, we truly do, and I'm not just saying this because of my position, but we have the best staff in the educational field. Regardless of who it is, whenever you talk to them, it's always about the students, and it's about helping other staff members, and that's huge. You can't always find it everywhere. But it's, we're just so blessed to have a staff that we do. And as President Goldman stated, we had 543 years of retired service, but of that, we have 250 of years of that time sitting in this room right now. So we're going to recognize that. We're going to ask Dr. Boylan to please come up, and she'll start the process. And each administrator will say a few things about the people that they work with, and then at the end, we'll have applause for everyone, and we'll start with that. So, Dr. Boylan.
Thank you, Dr. Mr. Stitzel. I forgot to remind everyone, as tempted as we all are to clap for each and every single person as they come up, I think just for efficiency's sake, we're going to hold it, and then at the very end, give a resounding round of applause for all of our incredible retiring employees this evening.
All right, so I'm going to ask for our Eithon retirees to come on up. We need Eleanor Ball, Dana Bereznik, Alice Hood, and Donna Gola. We're a team. So we're going to start with Eleanor. Mrs. Eleanor Ball has been more than a teacher in her 21 and one-half years at Eithon Elementary. Eleanor has always approached learning with thoughtful research. When she first suggested to me that she wanted to leave 5th grade to teach kindergarten, I was really surprised because she was an amazing 5th grade teacher. Well, she did her homework and had the opportunity to move to kindergarten, where she has quietly taught our youngest children. More importantly, she worked closely with the families of our youngest learners and her teammates. Eleanor's classroom seems to run by magic and laughter. Her silence speaks volumes and allows her children to do the talking and the thinking. That is the magic in Mrs. Ball's classroom. While it is so hard to see you leave us, I know you have great retirement plans and grandchildren, and you will continue to share your magic with them and maybe start a new career. Congratulations. Dana. Oh, come on over. Mrs. Dana Bereznik has been a reading specialist and teacher at Eithon Elementary School for 39 years. In that time, she has taught many struggling students to learn to love reading. She was a dedicated supporter of all things literacy and coached many teachers along the way. In a quiet and unassuming manner, Dana is a leader. She leads by example, does her research, and helps others become better teachers. Her two daughters followed her footsteps and are also teachers. So Dana, when you think back on your career, I hope you know the special impact you had on our young readers and their families. Your guidance was often the key to them gaining momentum in learning and having success. I know you know how much you impact, I hope you know how much you impacted the teaching of literacy at Eithon Elementary. Dana will continue to share all she knows with her new grandchild who is on their way. Congratulations. Mrs. Donna Gola. Mrs. Gola has been a teacher at Eithon Elementary for 29 years. No matter what Donna does, she does it with great energy. Donna gets to know her students and what makes them tick. She has so much energy and so many great ideas to share. Her colleagues were lucky to have her guidance and leadership, especially her young team this last year. Donna was the mother to many, the sounding board for others, and worked nights and weekends to plan and investigate to have the absolute best lessons for her students. She worked hard to figure out which each student needed and taught accordingly. Donna is exceptional both in and outside of the classroom. She has plans for lots of reading, lots of golf, and being with her family during retirement. Congratulations. Mrs. Alice Hood. Mrs. Alice Hood has been the mayor of the Hood at Eithon Elementary since 2003. It wouldn't be right if I didn't have a poem for Alice. Alice is known for her creative poetry and singing. Have any of you heard the Rumba song? Anybody in here remember the Rumba song? So Alice Hood, as a teacher, you were always particularly good. For 20 years in Room 28, you have been nothing but absolutely great. Laughing and teaching, singing and learning, a new life you had those 5th graders turning, staying late, Snickers galore, you taught with passion and so much more. Our kids are lucky, Eithon families know you are great. I know sometimes scoring those reading responses kept you up extremely late. You took the job to heart and very seriously, and ended each class with a little bit of glaze. Teaching and learning, that was your game. You will be remembered for changing the lives of kids who will never be the same. Congratulations are here for sure, and wonderful happy wishes for a great future and much more. So together, Eleanor, Donna, Alice, and Dana have taught for over 109 and one-half years in the school district. Think of the number of students, families, and colleagues that they taught in those years. We all know that teachers change the lives of children forever, but these four ladies are the fabric of what makes Eithon Elementary so great. They gave of their time, they've seen learning trends come and go and maybe come back again. They have passion, style, and a love of helping students, families, and colleagues do things just a little bit better. Thank you for all you've done for the students, staff, families, and this principal. This is what awesome looks like. So congratulations to the four of you.
Thank you.
And now, I would like to introduce Dr. Nancy Young from Radnor Elementary.
I'm never happy when I have to follow Dr. Boylan because she's so eloquent, and, well, I'm not. And so I'm going to ask Agnes to come up here and stand by my side just one more time, so Nurse Savery. And while she's coming up here, I just want to point out, Dr. Bachelor, President Goldman, and Mr. Stitzel, when you hired me, you did not tell me that I would have to replace the most beloved nurse of the district. So I might have reconsidered, but thank you, thank you for the trust. Agnes has just stood by me this entire, my first year, and I just, when I reflect on her, I think about how we talk about the heart of a school, and especially in elementary school, and you talk, you think about the teachers, right? And you think about the children and the families and all that. But Agnes has really been the pulse of Radnor Elementary School since it opened. Imagine this career of this incredible human being in 2001, supporting four principals, including this rookie, and the career that she must have had, and then to be able to towards that end, last quarter of her career, push an entire community through a pandemic is unbelievable. She has educated us, she has guided us, she has been by our side, and most importantly, she's done it all with such grace. Anything that came to her, she just, she led with her head and her heart, and she made good decisions to keep us all incredibly safe under a tremendous pressure. So I am so sorry that I didn't get to be there all those years, but I am so grateful that I learned from you, that you guided me. And I said to her, you know, one day she just came up to me and she put her hand, and she probably doesn't want me telling you all this, but I'm going to tell you anyway. She put her hand on me and she said, you know, you're doing a good job. And when somebody like Agnes Savery tells you that, that means the world. I mean, I appreciate you, Dr. Dukovich, and all the encouragement you give me, but to receive it from Agnes Savery is far more superior. So I'm sorry, it's just the way it is. But honestly, I do want to share that when I came to Radnor Elementary School, a wise person said to me, you will meet incredible people everywhere you go, and there are good people everywhere. But there really is only one Nurse Savery, and I just want to thank you for keeping us safe, for taking care of us, and your incredible grace. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'd like to introduce Mr. Vaughn Ryan for his retirees.
Good evening. I'd like to have Mr. Paul DeSantis, Phyllis Lawrence, and Jim Lyons. I think everyone knows me, I'm not one to do a lot of writing and having a lot of notes, but I can speak from the heart for a lot of these employees that I have standing here. Paul DeSantis was a member of our security team. Paul put a dedicated 19 years of service to Radnor Township, and he did it with a smile, grace, and charisma. He did have me on speed dial, so he did call me quite frequently on a Sunday, but it worked because I knew that if I got a call from him, it had to be a serious issue. So Paul, I'd like to thank you for your time of service, your dedication, and your commitment to serving the safety.
Thank you, thank you.
Phyllis Lawrence, a lot of you know me, I used to be the building maintenance guy at Wayne for 10 years. When I embarked on Wayne, taking on that position, Phyllis was there. Phyllis' commitment and dedication to serving the students, the staff, and just all the employees was just like phenomenal. She did it with a smile, she did it consistently without complaints. She didn't stay in a proper uniform all the time, but it was graceful, it did work. And, you know, just her commitment and dedication to what she was doing and knowing that those areas that she was responsible for was basically taken care of. During the pandemic, Phyllis volunteered to work the day shift as a daytime custodian on that shift because her goal was to make sure that every student in that building was safe. She walked around wiping walls, wiping railings, and just constantly saying, Vaughn, we need this, or we need that, and had myself a dunk and be able to provide those items for her so she can continually do her job to the fullest of her strength. Jim Lyons. Jim Lyons is like a big brother to me. Jim Lyons has been with me since 2004, when I first started in Radnor Township School District. His commitment to his craft and his skill set was top-notch. He was committed to doing things right, and if we wasn't doing things right, he told us. Everyone heard him throughout the district. But just knowing that he had a passion for the skill set that he had, his drive to make sure that every building HVAC was working properly, and if he couldn't fix it, he tried his best to repair it. So with his work and his effort, we will hopefully be getting a new HRU-1 at Wayne Elementary. And during his retirement, once we bit the crane and put it on top of the building, Jim will be standing right there, basically clapping. So Jim, I wanted to thank you, and thank all three of you guys for just being committed and giving that guidance and that support, because I wouldn't be where I'm at if it wasn't for employees like this that supported me and said, Vaughn, you can do this.
Thank you.
Vaughn just asked me to be his understudy in case he didn't get through that. He got through it, so you spared my words, and I just echo his congratulations to all three.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I'll be turning the things over to Dr. Scott.
I'd like to invite up Ms. Stacy Lethold. Can she bring her iPad? Representing the Technology Department, well. And of course, I did my notes on my phone, representing the Technology Department.
I wouldn't expect anything less.
So I want to share some ideas about Stacy. So Stacy actually has a lot of ed tech experience extending even prior to Radnor. Prior to joining us at Radnor, Stacy also worked in technology at the Pendelco School District. And when the opportunity came to join Radnor, Stacy graciously accepted the offer to join our team and really helped build a really strong technology team. And she served our district in the Technology Department for over 22 years. Most recently, she served as our district technology support specialist, and she provided support to our building technicians working on the front lines as well as behind the scenes, ensuring that students were ready to launch all of their software on day one. And the software tools seemed to increase every single year. And every year seemed like a new project, and Stacy was involved in many of those projects, including moving an entire middle school's worth of technology when the new RMS was built. It's a role that required patience and problem solving. Stacy always cared for others, ensuring we always had an empathy mindset to any enhancement or hurdle when they did happen, usually expressed through patience. It was also nice to be able to occasionally exchange in some regional Pittsburgh dialogue together spoken in a dialect known as Pittsburgh-ese, and I'll spare everyone the Pittsburgh-ese tonight. Her passion for ed tech and service continued even into her retirement, as Stacy remains active in the ed tech world, volunteering at statewide conferences such as P and C, and I think you're even going to SD tomorrow as well. Stacy, we thank you for your years of service, helping to continue our tradition of excellence and bringing technology to all of our students and our staff. Stacy, thank you.
It's been an honor.
Good evening. I'd like to ask Mr. Russell Dilks to come up. And I will say, I'm glad to see Russell, he made the trek up from Delaware, where he's currently residing in his retirement, and can't say I'm a little jealous, but a few years left for that. Mr. Russell Dilks was our high school and district food service coordinator for over 15 years. When you think of food service, you know, you think sometimes of the, you know, the Adam Sandler Lunch Lady land song, and, but our food service department does so much more than that. Sometimes the meals that our food service department provide our students are the only meals that they get for the entire day, and that's a big responsibility. And Russell was very, very focused on providing those meals every day for our students. He was always student-centric. I would go up and visit at the high school, and, you know, just the rapport that he had with our students was fantastic. I only really had the honor of serving with Russell for about seven months when I got here about a year and a half ago, and then Russell retired, but he was very helpful in me getting the lay of the land here at Radnor. And the one thing that I'll never forget was your awesome March Madness video that you did here last year. It was a contest that Russell put together on meal choices for our students to participate in up at the high school. So I just want to thank you for helping me get acclimated to the district, for everything you've done for the district as a whole, everything you've done for our students. Just want to wish you congratulations as you enjoy your retirement life in Delaware. So thanks, Russell, appreciate it.
Please join me in having everybody stand for an ovation for all of our employees in their 543 years of service. And the recognitions will continue with our 2023 Boys Basketball Championship Team recognition, and Ms. Monahan will do those honors.
Okay, hello, everyone. First of all, it's my honor to be giving this recognition to the Radnor Boys Basketball Team. My son is on, played on the JV team, and although I missed your regular season because I had to rush to my daughter's varsity game, I couldn't miss the playoff games, either watching it in person or live stream. So congratulations to the 2022-23 Radnor High School Boys Basketball Team for their undefeated regular season, going 22 and 0, winning the Central League Championship and District 1 5A Championship, and reaching the quarterfinals in the PIAA State Championships. The team was the first Radnor team to win the District 1 5A Championship in over 50 years, 50 years. It's pretty incredible. So I'd like to recognize all the individuals on the team. I will call out your name, and as I call your name out, if you can line up along here, I'll hand you a certificate as you come up, and then just line up so we can all see who you are. Starting with the seniors, first of all, glad to see that you made it back from Senior Week. And many of you are continuing to play in college, so that'll be exciting to see what you have hold in your future. So Jackson Gaffney. Jackson Hickey. Just go over there. Oh, I gave you Jackson. Nick Monty. Cooper Miller. Congratulations. Will Remfrey. Danny Rosenblum. Maybe we do need two people down here. Charlie Thornton. Christopher Tiberzki. No? Matt Wolfington. There are the seniors. I'll read the juniors next. Kessie Cox. Jack Jordan. Alex McFadden. Henry Pierce. Mike Savadov. Elijah Sellers. Our student managers are Joey Rigolizzo. Jake Van Horn. Weston Gallagher. And Matt Ream. And finally, the team is led by head coach Jamie Chadwin, and assistant coaches Josh Leopold and Mike Boland. Mike, if you can come up, too. And we will miss this amazing team of coaches next year. So the superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community, congratulates these students, their parents, and coaches on their outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations.
I'm going to invite the board to stand if they'd like to, because these gentlemen are so tall that we can't see over here. Do you want more pictures, Tedji? Or is that good?
I just say, you guys have some crossover with the lacrosse team, so we're actually going to have you hold up just at the door, and then after we finish both teams, we'll take them outside.
Sound good?
You get that, guys? All good? All right, just hang in for the next recognition, which is the 2023 Boys Lacrosse Team who has, that has just won its third straight PIAA Class 3A State Championship. And Ms. Monahan and Dr. Babson will be doing that recognition.
Okay, welcome, everyone. And tonight, we are going to congratulate yet another distinguished group of scholar athletes, our Boys Lacrosse Team. And this is not just their, any state championship, it's the third one in a row, which is, I think, very impressive. It's hard enough to, to win one of them, let alone three in a row. So congratulations. So this is for the Radnor High School Boys Lacrosse Team, and they defeated Springfield High School 8 to 1 in the PIAA Class 3A State Championship on June 17th at Penn State. The win made it a three-peat for Radnor after beating Garnet Valley High School in 2022 and Kennett High School in 2021 for back-to-back state titles. The team also captured the Central League Championship during the 2023 season. So the members of the team, we're going to call them out in the order of the certificates. So it doesn't quite match what we have here on our, on our paper, so Ms. Monahan's going to help us out. So first, we have Luciano Chata. Next, we have Nate Lucchese. Next, we have Kessy Cox. And we have Bryce Cohen. Okay? And we have Brian Henry. Johnny Webb. Logan Montrella. Matt Wolfington. Matt's here. Okay, we have Drew Knight. Owen Smith. Brendan Ward.
Miller.
Cooper Miller. Connor Eustace. Colin French. Caleb Horowitz. Carter Mountain. Danny Rosenbloom. Evan Hornbaker. Grayson Much. Harrison Holmes. Henry Pierce. Jude Azerano. Jake Barber. Jackson Gaffney. Justin Odoricio. Jacob Shalav. Max Goldstein. Mason Montrella. Michael Savadov. Nick DeCane. Owen Knight. Pablo Strid. Patrick Gray. Reed Gall. Ryan McWilliams.
That's a big team.
Robbie Slinkard. Sawyer Smith. Tommy Duchan. Tucker Graham. Tommy Goldstein. Tyler Vitale. Teddy Hoysgard. Ryan Van Duzen. Jack Sikowski.
Did we get everybody? Yeah? Because they stick.
Okay, great. So Student Director of Operations are Ryan Van Duzen, Teddy Hoysgard, and Jack Sikowski. This team is led by head coach John Beiger and assistant coaches Larry, sorry? Bezier, thanks. And assistant coaches Larry DiCipio, Mike Pagani, Pagoni, Mark Patron, John Sims, and Cole Jaeger. The superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community, congratulates these students, their parents and coaches, on their outstanding accomplishments. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a state powerhouse. Congratulations.
Before everyone, so students, they're going to do pictures, I think, in the lobby, so if you can gather in the lobby. Basketball Lacrosse Team, please help yourself to cake, the retirees and families as well. But thank you for being here tonight. Thank you all for being here tonight. You do not need to stay for the rest of the meeting. It looks like no one's looking like they're staying for the rest of the meeting. But I want to thank-
We won't take it personally.
Thank all the families for being here tonight as well. Really appreciate you all being here.
So many things that continue to make us Radnor proud, so thank you all. And with that, Dr. Bachelor, I'm going to turn the meeting back to you to do a summary of the 2022-2023 district initiatives.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think we might have just lost our presentation with the pictures. So let me just see if the- Sure, why don't you go to public comment first? That'd be great.
All right. So we're going to skip that for the time being, the presentation, until our communications director is finished doing what she's doing with the teams. And as per, we'll go to public comment, which is, as per Board Policy 6, the board provides an opportunity at each regular board meeting for eligible participants to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. Public comment can be either, made either in person or by telephone recording when circumstances prevent a community member from attending the board meeting. For details on how to make public comment by telephone recording, please visit rtst.org/board. Public commenters should state their full name and town and may make one comment per public comment period for no more than four minutes per comment. Administration will respond to general questions raised during public comment sometime after the meeting. Parents and guardians with specific questions or comments about their child's educational experience are encouraged to contact their child's teacher and/or building principal. Do we have any public comment in the room this evening? Mr. Conan, come on up and announce your name and town, and welcome to our board meeting. Might want to turn the-
This mic right here?
That's the mic, yep.
All right, cool. Jesse Conan, Brynmar, PA. If there is any confusion there. All right. My name is Jesse Conan, as just stated. And I'm missing a pretty good family dinner right now to come to speak to the board on the merits of the high school's lauded integrated programs. I'm a 2021 graduate of Radnor High School, a former student in the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade integrated programs, and I'm a current student at Duke University. I'm just one of countless students who owes many of the opportunities I've been lucky to possess to the skills developed within the high school's integrated programs, and am both saddened by and disappointed in the district's handling of these programs during the time I have been away from the high school. I vividly remember meeting with my guidance counselor, Mrs. Seymour, before enrolling for my junior year classes and having a lengthy conversation weighing my different choices. I was either going to take AP US History and AP Lang, two classes I knew I would do well in but were, and if we're still being honest, they're considered typically pretty boring, or Integrated Viewpoints, a class considered the school's most intellectually stimulating and challenging. I was worried at the time that colleges would see integrated on my transcript and not recognize the value of class in comparison to two proven AP courses overlooking the work I had put in. However, Mrs. Seymour reassured me that secondary institutions are concerned with things that stand out and were fully aware of the rigor and reputation of the class. At the time, I felt like I was putting my faith in her hands, but looking back now, I don't know why it was ever a hard decision to begin with. Now, with the programs not being run next school year, students will not have those same opportunities to stand in, to stand out that I had. The integrated program is one of the most unique academic opportunities for public school students anywhere in the country, and the decision to cut these programs immediately stifles the intellectual potential of Radnor High School, and it limits the ability for our students to stand out amongst an ever-growing crowd of what it seems like are AP acolytes. This decision is one of uniformity, anti-intellectualism, and in many ways cowardice, in my opinion. I'm not going to pretend to have been tapped into all the underworkings of district events in the past two years, but with three younger siblings and involved parents, it is hard not to hear things. From what I've heard, the integrated programs have suffered in recent years due to personnel issues, which in turn stem from attempts to appease certain sects of the Radnor populace who do not like their beliefs challenged. The fact that Radnor has laid waste to its crown jewel of critical thinking to appease people who do not seem to understand the purpose of permission slips, coupled with its disregard for the teachers who push these boundaries, is nothing short of cowardly. Again, I don't know everything, but this is how it appears to us, the general public. I can without a doubt say that I learned more about subjects such as writing, global affairs, foreign policy, literature, politics, and poetry in my integrated classes than in all the others combined. And the high-level thinking that is encouraged puts my classmates and I ahead of the pack in terms of college preparedness. AP classes in that regard are, quite frankly, a joke contingent on who memorizes facts about the Civil War better, as opposed to actually unpacking the Civil War, how it started, and the motivations on both sides. That is the difference between integrated classes and the rest. They encourage you to actually think. I understand the district is incentivized to increase AP enrollment, but the fact of the matter is that the integrated program is a 10 times more enriching class than its AP counterparts, and if its only downside is that it gets you to critically think about things you may not be typically exposed to, then I'd argue that there are no downsides and that those are good teachers doing good jobs. It is disrespectful to the Radnor students considering integrated to cut their programs based on the intolerance and inflexibility of others, and I strongly urge Radnor to salvage its one remaining shred of uniqueness by revamping the integrated programs in the district.
Four minutes has expired.
It's expired. All right, fair enough. That's a semi-piece.
Thank you, Mr. Conan. Is there any recorded public comment? And Mr. Conan, I'm going to give Dr. Bachelor a chance to either respond now or later to public comment, but let's first see, is there any other public comment in the room this evening? Is there any recorded public comment? No. Dr. Bachelor, if you have any response now or perhaps later?
Yeah. And always good to see you, Jesse. Always good to see alumni. And thanks for your comments. I will just share, just as a, this is something that the board and the administration has been looking at and been taking very seriously. There was no decision to cut any program. The decision has been based on enrollment. The students, when they have the ability to enroll in courses from grades, seventh grade through grade 11, we're seeing less kids enroll in the integrated courses. And that's the reason why some of the courses aren't running is because so few students are signing up for the courses where we've seen more signing up in the past. This is something that we're going to continue to look at as administration, as a school board. I especially appreciate the comment about revamping or how we need to look at things. This is something that we, as a district and administrative team, are taking very seriously and want to continue to look at as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Bachelor. And I guess that concludes public comment for this evening. I want to thank our public commenters and move into the next item on the agenda, which is the report from board committees. And we'll start with curriculum. Dr. Babson, Chair.
Sure. The board curriculum committee met on Tuesday, June 20th at 5:00 PM. Agenda items included the review of new student clubs, contracts, a biannual update of the Health and Safety Plan, et cetera. And then following these agenda items, there were presentations from our Technology Department, and then there was a report on the homework study from Dr. Kearney and Dr. Wiedlich. And finally, we had our high school leadership, Ms. Kevges, Ms. Rains, and Ms. Manukian give an update on the consolidation of academic levels at the high school. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 22nd at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Monahan for the Facilities Committee and board members. After we get through these reports, we're going to go back to our previous agenda item, which was presentations. So in the meantime, Ms. Monahan, Chair of Facilities.
Facilities Committee met on June 20th. On the consent agenda is a contract with SiteLogic as the Ithaca Elementary Construction Management Services, which is under 12.03. Also on the consent agenda is the 2023-24 Capital Project Fund Expenditures under Section 15.01. And also on the consent agenda is a Level 4 Change Order for the Radnor High School Accessibility and Wellness Project under Section 15.02. On our next scheduled meeting is August 15th.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. And I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Moore as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on June 13th. I'll highlight a few items on the agenda. The one priority action item we have tonight is the approval of the DCIU Special Education Intergovernmental Funding and Service Agreement. You may be wondering, Mr. Moore, didn't we approve the DCIU budget back in March? That was the operating budget for the DCIU as an entity. This is an agreement, a contract that districts in Delaware County have with the DCIU to provide special education services. On the consent agenda, there are a number of contracts and renewals. I'll highlight just a couple of those. We do have the renewal of our solicitor contract, which, less so in and of itself, but in a broader context of thinking about our professional services, triggered a little bit of discussion in the Finance Committee meeting about how often do we go out for RFP for professional services? And we heard a number of committee members' views on that. So I would encourage our board members to think about our practices in that area. We've been doing those, the way it looks now is the administration will sometimes bring forward contracts that have gone through an RFP, sometimes not, for a variety of different reasons. If we're looking for something that's more of a regular practice in that regard, that could be something to consider in the future. I always like to thank our donors and the Acme Nourishing Neighbors Grant from the Albertsons Company. We thank them for that. The, I'd like to also highlight something that is a great success story, I believe, in our district. I'd like to thank our business administrator, Mr. Pauling, for coming to us last year with the idea of having a tax rent and rebate program on the consent agenda tonight as a resolution for that. That is a program that mirrors one and supplements one that the Commonwealth does to provide senior citizens, widows, widowers, and disabled persons with fixed and limited incomes with a reduction on their property taxes or rent. So for those who are eligible under the state program, we offer a similar amount of rebate. And so I'd just like to highlight that a number of residents have signed up who qualify for that, and we're hopeful that we will promote this program even more so that everyone eligible is able to participate in it. And finally, I'll end with a question related to one of- And finally, I'll end with a question related to one of the items on the consent agenda, which is the appointment of voting delegates for the 2023 PSBA Delegate Assembly. On my board agenda, there are still three blank names, and I don't know, Mrs. Goldman, if you received anyone who wished to be considered for that when we have that item on the consent agenda.
Well, I would like to offer the opportunity to the board members participating tonight, and if we don't get them, perhaps we'll pull it and figure something else out, maybe on the -- in our -- perhaps we have a meeting in July. But is there anybody on the board who would like to serve? Dr. Babson, you've got your finger on the button, so I'm kind of guessing you might be one of them.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Babson.
We kind of go as a pair to this every year.
That's right, because of the soup, right?
This year, it's in Mechanicsburg, though. It's not back in Hershey, so we might call in.
So we have Dr. Babson, Ms. Dunn. Is there a third?
I was able to serve last year, but I have a conflict this year, so we will not be able to reunite the triad that served last year. I'm sorry to say.
Okay.
And this lady is Solomon.
Yes?
This lady is Solomon. I'll be the third. I'll volunteer to serve.
Okay, terrific. So we have three delegates. I want to thank Ms. Solomon, Dr. Babson, and Ms. Dunn for volunteering to be delegates who will be voting on discussing, not voting -- oh, yeah, voting on the PSBA's legislative platform. Always an interesting experience, so thank you all for participating in it. Mr. Moore, you've got your three.
All right, that concludes my report. The Finance Committee will reconvene sometime in August.
Great, thank you. And we'll turn to the Policy Committee, and Ms. Stern as Vice Chair is going to be giving that report.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. The Policy Committee met on June 13th, and we have five policies on the consent agenda tonight for second read and adoption. We tried to tie up the loose ends of the school year. There will be the Title I Parent Engagement, the policy on the personal necessity leave, there is a policy on enrollment in the district, a policy on homeless students, which I'd like to make note, will have a title change with this policy adoption. I don't see the exact name of it in front of me, but it will come under -- we talk about educational instability, students experiencing homelessness and educational instability. And then the other final policy is the policy on bullying. That's up for a second read and re-adoption. That is -- has to have a three-year review. Our next policy meeting will be August 15th. We'll kick off the school year at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. And I have a note here from Ms. Klusman that the Policy Committee also thanked Ms. Andrea McMenamin for her service to the committee as teacher representative and wishes her well, as she is one of our retirees this school year. So thank you, Policy Committee, for giving Mrs. McMenamin her due for her service to that committee. And that brings us to the Government Relations and Communications Committee. Mr. Jubelier, our Chair, has an excused absence, as I said earlier. I will just -- the Government Relations and Communications Committee met on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. The topics included the Delaware County Intermediate Unit's Legislative Breakfast and Panel Discussion, covering the political landscape highlights from the -- oh, political landscape, period. Highlights from the DCIU's June Legislative Report were given. Of special interest was legislation providing incentives for students to get involved in the teaching profession. And the committee reviewed the PSBA Legislative Platform Proposals, which can be found on this evening's consent agenda, which are items 11.01 through 11.03. And lastly, the committee discussed possible topic ideas for next school year. The Government Relations and Communications Committee is scheduled to meet next on Tuesday, August 22nd at 7:00 p.m. So thank you all for those reports, and we're going to go back a couple pages to our presentation that Dr. Bachelor is going to give us, which is a summary of the 2022-2023 Radnor Township School District Initiatives. Dr. Bachelor.
Great, thank you. As it is our last meeting of the year, this school year, we wanted to take a moment to share a summary of our district initiatives from the previous academic year. So the initiatives that we're going to be sharing, we've been looking at as we move forward, but both as we wrap up these initiatives, many of the initiatives are multi-years initiatives and are in process, and the themes of belonging, wellness, and achievement have been a constant throughout our initiatives this past year and as we move forward into the next school year as well. The next slide, we always like to begin with, again, what is our mission and what is our vision and core values and how that links to our comprehensive plan? And together, how do we work together to unlock the potential in all of our students? Moving to the next slide, our district initiatives fell into four main themes, meeting the needs of all learners, which was the implementation of our multi-tiered system of supports, our student wellness, which was our college and career readiness recommendations, and also our homework study, our culture of dignity and belonging, our implementation of belonging through a culture of dignity, and the work that that has been done district-wide. And then our shaping the future, being very purposeful as a board and as a community, looking at all of our buildings and understanding what are our needs, both in the immediate needs, but also the five, 10, 15 years down the road. How do we tackle to make sure that all of our buildings are kept up to the standards and the quality that we expect as a district? So I'm going to turn it first over to Dr. Dukovich, and there'll be several administrators that will be just jumping in at different times to share quick summaries of each one of these initiatives. And often, I just want to give a reminder to the board and for anyone who might be watching this presentation, you know, each year we select district initiatives. We talk about the importance of having maybe fewer initiatives to make sure that we're not pulling the organization in too many directions. But we also realize that our initiatives, while they identify important aspects of our program, they also don't identify all that we do as a school district. There's many things that happen that are so important in our district that may not be represented as the district initiative, but I often look at the district initiatives as part of our continuous improvement program. How do we continually improve as a district in one of those areas that we've identified that we want to make sure we're measuring as we move forward? So I'll turn it over to Dr. Dukovich to kick us off, and other administrators will be jumping in as well.
Okay. As Dr. Bachelor mentioned, the initiative of meeting the needs of all learners has been specifically focused on the multifaceted implementation of multi-tiered systems of support. This year, we completed our second year of practical implementation, where the MTSS framework has become more and more integrated within our practices. Systems have been created and refined, and we are making good progress towards our goals. The following two slides provide a summary of some of the key areas that we have worked to develop this school year. On Slide 5 -- oh, one backed you. There you go. One more back. On Slide 5 here, there's a list of evidence of progress, and I'll just name a few. We've invested a significant amount of time on math professional development, K to 8 through consult with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. We have continued to work on Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions and worked to refine and streamline those specifically at the middle school and the high school. Team processes and referral form refinements have also been made at all levels, K to 12. We implemented the Lunch and Learn midday support at the high school this year, and this has been a very well-received new initiative there, as well as, we talked about earlier, the high school consolidation of academic levels, which was recently reviewed as a summary at the June Board Curriculum Committee meeting. Moving to the next slide, this slide reflects some of the new diagnostic assessment tools, some of our resources, including Freckle, Fracs Math, IXL, to name a few. The expansion of our Second Step Social-Emotional Learning Curriculum, now it's K to 8 after this year, and our implementation of the Linkit Data Warehouse and Intervention Tool that we worked first this year to build capacity with our administration, our MTSS facilitator coaches, as well as early adopter teachers who volunteered. As we transition into next school year, the implementation of MTSS continues at all levels and with specific focuses on expansion and refinement of our systematic practices, use of our adopted tools such as STAR and Linkit, and use of interventions, personnel, and supports. Of course, professional development for administrators, teachers, and staff will be a critical and necessary part of this ongoing process. As we transition to Initiative 2, Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity, and this has been specifically focused on continuing the diversity, equity, and inclusion work that has unfolded over the last several years at Radnor. Through an all-district book study and implementation of staff and student climate surveys, we aim to build a foundation for dignity and belonging through both a qualitative and quantitative lens. On this slide here, we began the year with an explicit focus on belonging. As you can see on the slide, this included elements from our primary resource, the book, Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity, as well as visuals and quotes, and a keynote speech during our convocation from authors John Kornapple, pictured in person, and Floyd Cobb, who joined us via Zoom. Moving on to Slide 8, the focus on dignity and belonging has been an evolving process at Radnor. This just didn't start this year. Our administrators and staff have been engaged in DEI work for quite some time. Over the last several years, the work focused on building a foundational understanding through professional development with consultants in the field. School-based teams have developed their own committees, and through meetings, book studies, and trainings, they have worked to understand and foster belonging through their school communities. More recently, RTSD collaborated with regional experts from agencies such as Sage Wellness to develop a common perspective. Through listening circles and committees, Radnor developed a common vision and four guiding pillars for DEI work. Through this timeline, these ongoing efforts have led to our present focus on developing a sense of belonging for everyone in the Radnor School District community. Moving on to Slide 9, this slide just represents the implementation plan that we put in place from the start. All aspects of our plan have been satisfied this year, and we have ongoing next steps planned for next year and beyond. Moving along to Slide 10, finally, this slide reflects a recent Board Curriculum Committee meeting where the progress of the initiative was shared in full. Our five building principals were present to share their staff and student climate survey results and associated action steps, as well as next steps forward. The climate survey work illustrates one of the quantitative elements of this initiative that helps to evaluate our progress and drive continuous improvement. This presentation is available on our YouTube channel if you're interested in learning more. One additional element here is our Human Resources Department has made a concerted effort to continue to investigate and focus on recruitment of hiring of more diverse candidates to join the Radnor family, and that's been an ongoing effort as well. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Bechtel to discuss our Initiative 3.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dukovich. Over the last several years, the study of student wellness has been a focus in the Radnor Township School District. The investigation began after discussions and focus groups with community members that were held in the fall of 2018. This study divided into three focus areas: social, emotional, and behavioral wellness, physical wellness, and college and career capacity wellness. Each year, the Radnor Township School District has addressed aspects that fell into these three respective focus areas. This year, RTSD identified MTSS implementation, which was touched on earlier in this presentation, the social, emotional learning curriculum, the homework study, and digital wellness initiatives, which fell under the social, emotional, and behavioral wellness focus area. The district also worked to implement the College and Career Readiness Initiative recommendations, which fell under the College and Capacity Wellness Focus Area. Over the coming slides, we will highlight some of the work that has been done during the 2022-2023 school year. When we look at the College and Career Readiness Study, this year, the district worked to implement the recommendations of the College and Career Readiness Study that were presented last spring. This study gathered feedback from various constituents and examined best practices and future trends to reimagine the operations of our school counseling department at Radnor High School. The study culminated with a comprehensive report outlining changes needed to enhance the experience for our students and their families. This year, RTSD worked with our consultant, Mr. Will Yarnell, from Villanova University, and hired two college and career counselors to act upon the study recommendations. Throughout the year, the team focused on developing schoolology programming, restructuring departmental processes, establishing communications, and building a college and career transition prep course. Mr. Yarnell, Ms. Goff, Ms. McGab and Widlick, and Ms. Pace provided an update to the curriculum committee as to their progress at the May 23 meeting. A presentation for the class of 2024 and their parents was held on May 31st to officially begin the transition to this new structure. As we move forward to the next slide, and we look at homework, a committee comprised of parents, students, and school board members, teachers, and administrators met this year to conduct an evaluation of RTSD's homework policy and practices with the aim of identifying areas for improvement. The group discussed articles about homework research and recommendations in the field. Additionally, they reviewed the feedback provided by students, parents, and teachers through surveys about their experiences with homework. The committee also analyzed homework policies and ARs from other school districts. Dr. Kearney and Dr. Widlick shared the findings of the homework study and recommendations during the most recent curriculum committee meeting. The next steps include providing an update to administrators and teachers and drafting revisions to Radnor's homework policy and AR to bring to the policy committee for deliberation next year. Further details regarding the homework study can be found on the Radnor Township School District website. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Hand to speak about some of the digital wellness initiatives related to student wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel, and we're excited to share some of the progress that we made when we think about student wellness. We focus on the very contemporary issue of digital wellness and what that looks like. And one of the areas that we've continued to do has become a Radnor tradition is our annual Day of Unplugging, which occurred in March. We did have to put that on hiatus during COVID, but have brought that back in recent years. Our Day of Wellness brings awareness and some really great conversations inside of our classroom about the thoughtful use of technology, when to use it and when not to use it. That day to just shut down is a really good time to be reflective, and we found our teachers even continuing that maybe beyond a day, and some teachers even doing that for more than one day, maybe upwards of a week. Also, we've enhanced some of our supports for families and our conversations and communications with families about how to work with screens and digital technologies at home, providing them with resources to be able to navigate, understand, and monitor some of that usage that they have coming through their home internet as well. At the end of last school year, we were in the final throes of putting together our Screen Time Position Statement, which was created by our Technology Think Tank, which is our technology committee made up of teachers and students, administrators, community members, and parents. So we were able to put that together and launch into this school year with that position statement where we're talking about the thoughtful and appropriate use of technology and how to weigh that when in instruction. And one of our first action areas beyond that position statement in generating awareness amongst our faculty and staff was our Device at School program, which we had launched at the beginning of the school year, where students in kindergarten through second grade would leave their iPads at school, and actually extended that to third through fifth graders this past spring. So based on three criteria, they would take their devices home. Rather than going home with them every single day, they would go home firstly if there was an instructional need. So if there was homework, they would take the device home, there was the need for that, or if there was a flexible or remote instruction day, that made sense to have the device for those types of days, or if there was a family request. So if that was a device they wanted to have at home for extra supports or devices that they needed there. So we're really proud to be able to be thoughtful in having that position, but also looking at all areas of digital wellness. And I will turn it over to Mr. Dolan, who is helping us shape the future.
Thank you very much. In addition to all these wonderful programs, we want to be good stewards of our buildings and grounds, and so shaping the future, as Dr. Hand just said, has become sort of a catchphrase for a lot of the programs that we're doing in service of being good stewards of our buildings and grounds. In the history of the last couple of years, we've taken a really good, long look at our feasibility -- the feasibility of the buildings through our feasibility study. A year ago, at the June 2022 meeting, we accepted that feasibility study, and then we've spent this past year taking that information that was gathered and putting it into practice and mapping out how we were going to go forward. So in addition to the Accessibility and Wellness Project at the high school, we've also, this year, focused on some of the -- I don't want to call them deficiencies, but projected needs, serious needs in the district, specifically with Ithan Elementary and the administration building. We've come up with plans to tackle those and address them going forward. And then also, all those other things that were not part necessarily of Ithan or the administration building that needed to be put into our capital planning for the next five, 10, and 20 years. If we go to the next slide, we'll give a quick update on where we are with the Accessibility and Wellness Project at the high school. This has been a very, very busy year at the high school. The project is just over two years, and we are wrapping it up now. So you see some slides here from more recent -- more recent slides. A lot less dirt and a lot more finished product and students, and it's always good to see. Aside from some material delays on the Fieldhouse Nest ceiling, we are really wrapping things up. So this summer will be dedicated to punch lists, to moving in, to having final inspections, and to -- and to orientation, and to start to really fully use all of those new facilities. The new Ithaca Elementary School progress can be measured by our steering committee that was formed this past year and has moved us with our architects and engineers through a programming phase. This is a phase where we assess the site, the size of the building, and our budget. And we've just completed that, last month approved that, and we are now moving on into this summer, the schematic phase, where we get into a lot more detail of the development of the building. And on our agenda tonight, we have on consent agenda, as was mentioned before, another team player in that project, which is our construction management services. So that new Ithaca will be continuing to pick up speed as we go in the design process. We talked a little bit about the five, 10, 20-year plan. We have spent this last year, and I'm going to thank all the other administrators who have helped with this, to parse out all those other things that were identified in the feasibility study to help prioritize them. We couldn't get them all done in one fell swoop, so we have to prioritize budget and then come up with what kind of bandwidth do we have to make repairs, make improvements, and maintain our buildings outside of any new construction. And then the last thing is the administration building, which was also identified in the feasibility study as a building that really needs a lot of attention, whether it's full renovation or phased upgrades. We need to look at that seriously. So this summer, we will be putting together a committee to look at that and then present a plan in the fall for how we would move forward with the administration building. And so I think at that point, Dr. Bachelor...
Thank you. You want to wrap up? So if you want to learn more, did you have a comment? Go ahead. So for board members, anyone watching, the last slide there leaves you with a little quick summary, QR codes, where it will take you to our website for even more detailed information on each of these topics. And then the final slide leads us to the next steps, is the Radnor Township School District are drafted initiatives for next year. And really, I don't know if I would call this draft. This is something that we as a board are going to discuss, you know, in August and September, and it's the normal timeline. This is the continuation of many of the things, you know, listed here under belonging wellness and achievement that are already in progress, and it's the next steps in achieving many of those items. Each year, our district initiatives are identified through a discussion with our school board and the administrative team, you know, and feedback both from the school board and our administration is how we develop these initiatives. We plan to continue that in the August-September timeline. But we wanted to list here just preliminary, you know, as a little bit of a brief preliminary look at some of the initiatives that are in place, how we see them continuing, and then but we're going to have a broader conversation on this page starting in August.
Thank you, Dr. Bachelor, and thank you to the administrators who did that presentation. It was really tremendous. And to the entire administrative team and all the staff who work here in the district, because it takes, it's a heavy lift to do these things in addition to the day-in and day-out work of running a school system. So on behalf of the board, we extend our sincere appreciation to the presentation summary and all the work that you do every day to help do what we do for our students. I'm going to ask board members, both who are remote and in person, if they have any questions or comments. I'm going to start perhaps with the folks who are remote and then go to the ones in person. So is there anybody who is joining us remotely who has any questions or comments about what you've just heard in this presentation? It's fine if you don't, but if you do, this is your opportunity.
I believe Ms. Solomon's waving her hand.
I don't know what is present there in the room. So this is Lydia Solomon. I don't have any questions at this point. I just want to acknowledge that I had plenty of questions and comments throughout the year, and really, I just want to extend thanks to the administration on all the hard work that has gone into this. This is a presentation that there's so much work behind what they've shown today. And so really, I just want to commend the administration and to thank them so much for this work on behalf of the students in Radnor. We're very, very appreciative. I'm expressing that on behalf of students, the community, and obviously myself. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. Ms. Stern or Ms. Duffy, any questions or comments?
I would like to echo Ms. Solomon's comments. One of the things I was struck by as you were reviewing the initiatives from this year that the administration reviewed is that's only the beginning of the work that they did this year. That was the starting point. There was so much more. I mean, you touch upon the things that their draft, the draft initiatives for next year, you know, the Radnor Academy, that there's been a tremendous amount of work that went into that initiative that's going to be starting in the fall. The work on our facilities and wellness, I mean, it's, there's just been a tremendous amount of work. The conversation, there's just a bullet point about beginning to talk about the conversation of investigating, you know, international baccalaureate. These are just a couple of examples that you would not know if we didn't point it out that a tremendous amount of time and energy and effort has been put forth by our administration and our teachers to, on those initiatives this year and with Dr. Bachelor. So I just want to thank them and acknowledge them, and we did not, with a theme we talked about a couple of weeks ago, is we have not let up the gas pedal. The work of this district, it feels like not only did it not slow, it feels like it kind of picked up steam. So, Dr. Bachelor, when you come back with your proposed initiatives for the fall, just remember, somehow we end up with extra things too. So, you know, less might be more, but you know, try to streamline yourself, because you all have knocked it out of the ballpark, all of you, on your team and everyone under you, and we are really grateful.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Stern, and it's a team effort. We have a high-achieving staff across the board in our district that is matched with a high-achieving administrative team, and even at moments when I try to slow them down, it's hard in any aspect. But there's also importance to what we're doing and the work with students, and when we see areas where we can approve, you know, the team wants to tackle it. So it's been a team effort, so thank you for your kind words.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stern. Ms. Duffy, anything?
Just, you know, echoing the same sentiments, a lot of thanks and appreciation for all the good work and the continued work into the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the board here in the room? Okay, not seeing any. I think those sentiments from our remote board members really expressed how we all feel about all of you as our district leader, administrative team, each and every one of you, and all of the staff that go into working so hard every day to provide the best possible educational experience for our students and their families. So thank you for that excellent presentation, and we will move at this point into the next item on our agenda, which is our priority discussion and action item. It is the approval of the 2023-2024 Delaware County Intermediate Unit Special Education Funding and Service Agreement. The recommended action is that the board approves an agreement between Radnor Township School District and the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for the 2023-2024 School Year Special Education Intergovernmental Funding and Service Agreement at an estimated cost of The payments shall be made in accordance with the schedule outlined in the Special Education Intergovernmental Funding and Service Agreement, and final reconciliation of payments to expenses will be completed no later than November 1, 2024. Do I have a motion for that action item?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand if you're here and saying aye if you're remote.
Aye.
That was Ms. Stern. Ms. Duffy?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
Aye.
That's an eight-nothing vote.
I abstain from this vote. I abstain from this vote.
Okay, so we have seven in favor. Any opposed? And one abstention.
I abst... One abstention.
Right, seven in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention. Thank you all very much. We're going to move next into the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. With the consent of all board members, they are therefore grouped, and approval is given in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, the board president will move it to an appropriate place on the agenda. Has anybody have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 11.02.
11.02, Ms. Stern, okay? Ms. Dunn?
I think based on earlier conversation, we need to pull 12.10 to put names in as the delegates.
Ms. Dunn, okay, great, super. Anything else? All right, then I'm going to entertain a motion for the approval on the consent agenda of items 10.01 through 17.03, with the exception of items 11.02 and 12.10. All those in favor, please indicate if you're present by raising your hand, and then I'll pull those on the phone. So let's have one, two, three, four here on the, oh, it just went up, okay? I didn't miss your hand. Five, okay, so five in present on the phone. This is really, this is multitasking, folks. On the phone, Ms. Solomon, are you aye?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. Duffy?
Aye.
That's eight in favor. No opposed? It's everybody.
Yep, Mrs. Golden, I'm sorry, just to raise a point of order, did we actually have a motion and a second for the consent agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have a second.
I think we just went right to the vote.
I'm, thank you, Mr. Moore. Trying to keep track of everybody and those. It's challenging. So may I have a, the motion was made by...
I'll make the motion that we passed that.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I abstain.
Ms. Monahan is the second. Thank you, Ms. Solomon. All those in favor again, now that we have a motion and a second. That's five present. Ms. Solomon again, in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. Duffy?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes eight to nothing. Going back to item 11.02, Ms. Stern.
Yes, I pulled this because I would not like to vote for it.
Does anybody want to move this item?
So moved.
Mr. Moore, is there a second?
I'll move item 11.02 as written.
Is there a second? Ms. Monahan is the second. Is there any discussion?
Can I just say, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Stern.
Go ahead, Ms. Dunn.
No, I was just going to say, I feel like this item was on our agenda last year, and we had ample discussion at that time, and I voiced my opinions at the time. So I was surprised it showed up again this year, but that's fine.
I also just want to make a quick comment that I don't believe that because these are moving forward, that that implies the full endorsement of every member of the board. You know, it's a sort of like a, you know, general kind of thing.
No, but that's a good reason if somebody doesn't agree with it for them to pull it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But I guess I would just sort of put forward there that I wouldn't say that I agree with that either, but I hadn't planned on saying anything, but now that something has been said, I would say that.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. And Ms. Stern?
Yes, so, well, I understand the good intentions of the notion of a nonpartisan school board election. I actually, I think it's a, let me say this, how would I say it? In states where there are not party affiliations listed for school board members, I believe that there is ample political ideology expressed. If that were not the case, I think we would not see some of the school board strain that we've seen over the last several years over ideology. In fact, in some respects, I think knowing someone's political party upfront makes it really transparent or provides an opportunity for them to be transparent about their ideology. And I think it's a little bit naive is the best word I can think of, but there might be a better, more appropriate word, to think that in states that do not have political parties listed, that political ideology is not brought to a school board. I think we've seen that play out amply over the last several years in particular. So that's the principal reason that I would not, do not support this particular legislative proposal. However, it would be wonderful if it were not the case, but in fact, it is the case. I do, however, would support not cross-filing. I find that process extraordinarily exhausting, so that's why I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Ms. Stern, and I think Ms. Monahan has a comment.
I actually have a question. The way, and just a point of clarification, I'm questioning, wanting a point of clarification. The way this is written, it does recognize that in the state of Pennsylvania, that it is, the election code still calls for partisan political identification on the ballot for the election, but this resolution or this, this proposed...
Proposal.
Yeah, proposal is basically just saying, prohibiting the ability to cross-file for the primary. Am I reading that correctly?
So I don't know, there are two parts to this. So take a step back. Right now, the current PSBA legislative platform has something in it about cross-filing. What it says is it is our platform. When we are lobbying the legislature as PSBA, what we say as part of the platform is, don't take away cross-filing. And the reason it says, don't take away cross-filing, is we don't want to infuse partisan party politics and priorities into school board races. What this platform proposal does is essentially amends that. The principle behind the amendment is, now, cross-filing doesn't really keep party politics out of it. What would do better, not perfectly, as Mrs. Stern certainly observed correctly, what would be better, a better way to not have party politics in school board elections, take party identification off altogether. So there's two parts to it. One part is saying that as a platform, PSBA should advocate for no party identification on the ballots. Once you're advocating for that, logically, you would be taking cross-filing out of the platform as something to maintain. There's nothing to, if you're taking away the labels, there's no label to cross-file about either. So that is a consequence of how the platform is currently written. It's currently written, say, keep in cross-filing. This has been structured to take away party identification and then also take away advocating for cross-filing. Now, your question might be, is something missing from how this is written in the agenda? Because I am not able to read it as we're talking about it, but that's what this is supposed to do.
So wait, wait, wait. Susan, I'm not, Ms. Stern, I'm not, I just want to reiterate just so that I understand. So the way this is written, I'm all for nonpartisan, and I think we've had conversations about this as well. However, given, so in one hand, it's attractive to me. However, if, how it's written is to not identify in the existing political election within the state of Pennsylvania, to not identify those running, you know, it would have to be, I don't want to, I don't want to pull a fast one on people and, you know, know that behind the scenes, people are being political and running, and people who are voting don't know about it, right? In the state of Pennsylvania, the way it's structured, I'm all for nonpartisan. I think it's just a matter of rewording it in a way that encourages more, not just not showing your political affiliation, but more like, don't have this election be political, period. You know, like, I think that's a different scenario. Am I accurate in saying that?
No, I think you're accurate. The challenge I have, as somebody who watches elections, the Pennsylvania election is essentially run by the Democratic and Republican parties. When you go in to the primary, you have to identify yourself as one of those voters. I guess what they're saying is put all people on both ballots, or put them on neither ballot. That's the thing, there's nothing, and I understand that some of this is, we're not trying to tell the legislature how to do it, we're asking them to remove party politics from this. But I just think, I worry that it would get done poorly.
So could I just jump in here for a second? Because I... So, could I just jump in here for a second? Because I actually read the wording on our agenda, pretty much the exact opposite of how it was just explained. So, I'd like to clarify what our agenda says. But I'd also just like to put forth the notion that I would be perfectly comfortable personally if, if people who were registered as independents or some other political party ran for party office. I think the fix for that at the state level, it's not our job to fix, I'm just going to say, I think the fix for that at the state level is to have, to not have closed primaries, which forces people to select a political party in order to run. If we would, if the state would have a different conversation about open primaries and letting anyone vote in the primaries, then, then that could, that could be a different way to address that. But, but Ms. Goldman, I'd like to read that what our amendment says is it proposes to prohibit the ability for school board candidates to cross file while the election code still calls for partisan political identification on the ballot. So, this proposal isn't advocating for getting rid of partisan political identification. It's, it is calling for removing the ability, prohibiting school board candidates to cross file while, while the code still calls for political identification.
Yeah, that's--
I actually happen to agree personally--
That's how I read it.
--with the notion of getting rid of cross filing. But I don't agree with the notion of getting rid of political, I want to know who I'm voting for. I don't want to not know or have a sense of someone's ideology, their sense of their ideology.
Yeah, and Ms. Stern, that is exactly how I read this as well, which is why I wanted to clarify, like, how this is written, it doesn't make any mention whatsoever that, you know, the, the election code still calls for partisan political identification, which means that your political identification is mentioned on the ballot for the election, but you can't cross file. So, I don't, I don't know where--
The first sentence says, there are two parts. The first part is, propose this addition. The addition is amend the election code to remove political partisan political identification from the ballot for the election of school directors. Right now, state law requires partisan identification. The first step of this proposal is, we, PSBA, are asking our legislature, no, amend this, take political partisan, take partisan political identification off. In addition, there's a second part about cross filing. But step one is, is to remove the political identification from the ballot. As, as most states have it, as a reminder, Pennsylvania, our Commonwealth, is one of two or three states that requires partisan identification on the ballot. Then there are some states who let districts kind of choose one way or another. And then there are some states where it is, you know, truly nonpartisan. There is one election, there's no primary, and there are a list of names.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think basically here, if we had had a bullet point for, or a number one for under, and then the bullet point or a number next to the other under, I think that we'd have less confusion, because there's really, there's two parts of the proposal.
I can't understand when multiple people are speaking. I don't know if anybody else, so Andrew was saying something, and I couldn't--
Sorry, no, I, I think it's simply a matter of, of organization of the paragraph. Like, it, it should say proposal, like, two parts, or like, part A, under, and then it could be like, part B or part two, under 2023 PSBA legislative. So, you see that? So, it's actually two parts of the proposal. So, then that kind of matches with the rationale, that kind of links up with the rationale a little bit better.
Who, who wrote the rationale? Who, who wrote the, from where did we get that rationale?
I, I do not know the answer to that question. This is, if not identical, this is very similar to a proposal that we had last year that this board passed. And then in GRCC, we talked about having it again, since it passed the board last year. And I believe that the chair of GRCC, who is not present, may have tweaked the wording with the administrative liaison for that committee. But I was not present in those discussions, if that's how it happened.
Got it. So, so ultimately, I want to vote against it. I happen to disagree with the rationale. I don't think it's accurate. I think it's an assumption that if we look at all the states across the country that do not have political parties associated with their school board members, it's not like those states aren't having ideological problems at their school board meetings. So, I think it is a false rationale. But that's the end of my comments. I just wanted to pull it so I could vote against it.
Yeah, and Mrs. Stern, I actually agree with you in, I half agree with you. I have, I agree with you that those other states have that problem. But I believe, what I like about the rationale is, I think that having the identification makes it even worse than those states that do not have the identification. And I know we disagree on that point. We've talked about it before. We talked about it a year ago in this, in this meeting last time.
Ms. Duffy, did you have, or Ms. Monahan, you had something you wanted to say?
Just, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not 100% against this, because I just feel like school boards, and it should not be political. However, knowing that we are in the state of Pennsylvania, which run school board elections at election times, and, you know, I don't feel that that's going to change overnight, one thing, and I can make a motion for this, but one thing may be that we, we get rid of this first recommendation, and just ask that they prohibit cross filing, which I feel that sometimes can get the political ball rolling before the election. Just, you know, run based on the, the primary. So, I mean, I can make a motion to amend the, the proposal. And if it's seconded, great. If not, then we'll just vote as it. So, I'll make a motion to amend the proposal to eliminate the first addition of amending the election code to remove partisan political identification from the ballot.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Okay.
Hearing none?
Then we're good.
Motion fails?
Yep.
Is there anybody else who wants to make a comment? I have one comment to add before I call, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, just briefly, I think this is in the spirit of a remark Dr. Babson made. You know, we are not the legislature of the state. This is what we are asking our association, PSBA, to consider. If, if passed by this board, this goes to the platform committee. It's really the platform committee within that structure that does a lot of what we've started doing here, which is talking about language. Could this be worded differently? Should this be one proposal? Should this be two proposals? I served on the platform committee one, one year, and that's, that's what it looks like. Boards submit all kinds of things. They get parsed, the language gets changed. And then really, at the delegate assembly, it's, it's an all or nothing vote. So, we have people within our association who are board members, who are our representatives to the platform committee, who really do that nitty gritty work of, of changing the wording of proposals that come forward. So, if there is concern or distress about how this is worded, this will be in good hands in the, in the platform committee, if, if it survives as, under a majority vote here. And if it doesn't get set on here, then it won't be considered in the platform committee.
Dr. Babson?
Just very quickly, I mean, I, I want to circle back to, not to perseverate, maybe I am perseverating, I don't know. But the, the first point that I was making or driving at earlier was that, so if we, just as a point of order, and maybe this is something to address to Mr. Kristofko or whatever, but if we don't agree with the proposed item to go forward to the platform committee, is the correct action then to pull it and then to say, I disagree? Because we're not really voting on, on these. It's, it's really--
Yeah, you are voting, so you would not vote in support of it if you didn't want to move it forward to the platform committee.
So, so what, but procedurally, would, what would you do? Would you pull it from the consent agenda?
It has been pulled from consent, so we're voting on it as a standalone item. I'm going to call for a vote on this item. And if you don't want to see it move on to the platform committee, you would vote against it.
Got it. Okay, so that, that is procedurally how we go?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
No problem. Anybody else? Ms. Duffy? It's very late where Ms. Duffy is, so maybe she's moved on. I just want to say, I admire your grit, Mr. Moore, because I know that, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Duffy?
No, it's okay. Yes, it is almost 3:00 in the morning where I am. I am following along, but excuse me. Yeah, this is something that, you know, Mr. Moore feels really passionate about. I mean, he has brought it up. I participated in the delegate meeting before, where we go through discussion. So, I, I guess I have one question. If, you know, I know these are all due on the 30th. Is there some discussion, if we wanted to change the language, that would, can we still change the language before we submit? I know they're due on June 30th.
That would have to be done--
And if we did do that to make more people feel comfortable, how do we, you know, how would we then get approval?
Well, that, that would have to be done tonight through a motion to amend, Ms. Duffy. So, I don't know if you want to pursue that or not, but we are here to vote on this item tonight, and it will go forward as is. If it passes, if it doesn't pass, it won't move forward. If it's amended and it's approved as an amend, with the way it's amended, it would go forward as an amended version. So--
Okay.
Are you making a motion to amend, or are you just going to leave it at that?
I am not, right now, no.
Okay, I have 3:00 in the morning. Anybody else? Mr. Moore, like I said, I admire your grit. I know you feel really passionately about this. I do agree with what Ms. Stern said fundamentally, which is that until our state recognizes that we should, in my view, have an open primary so that every citizen of Pennsylvania can participate as a voter, regardless of party, and if you are not registered with a party, that, to me, is the overarching solution to this, or at least a step in the right direction. I sincerely hope that at some point, maybe if it fits into the platform, we would advocate for every voter in Pennsylvania having a say in our primary process, which they don't right now, if you're not registered with a party. So, and I have seen this debate go down a number of times with the delegate assembly, and it has failed. And so, I admire your grit, but I also, if it, if it, in my view, I'm, I'm not going to support it because I don't believe that it is something that I want to get behind until the larger fix is addressed. And so, therefore, I won't be supporting it either. And if, with that, if there aren't any other comments, I would like to call a vote on item 11.02. We had a motion from Mr. Moore, a second from Ms. Monahan. All those in favor of supporting item 11.2, please indicate if you're here by raising your hand first. Mr. Moore, that's one. On the phone, is there anybody in support of 11.02? Hearing none. All those opposed, right here, raise your hand. That's four. On the phone, is there anybody opposed to item 11.02? Please indicate. Ms. Stern?
Sorry, I am opposed.
Ms. Solomon?
Lydia Solomon, opposed.
Ms. Duffy?
Opposed.
Okay, so the motion fails one to seven. Unless I read that backwards, Mr. Kristofko, seven to one. But, motion fails one to seven. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the other item that was pulled, which is item 12.10. Ms. Dunn, that should be a quick fix.
Yes, I would like to move to amend item 12.10, where there are blanks to include the names of Dr. Andrew Babson, Mrs. Lydia Solomon, and Sarah Dunn as the district representatives.
Okay, is there a second to fill in those three names? Ms. Monahan, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of approving item 12.10 with the addition of those three names, please indicate by here, raising your hand. That's five. And on the phone, Ms. Solomon?
Yes.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. Duffy?
Yes.
Okay, item 12.10 passes eight to nothing. Thank you all very much for your work on the consent agenda. And that will move us to, give me a second to turn the page here. That will move us to our reports from board liaisons and community announcements. We'll start with the Delaware County Community College. Ms. Solomon?
No report.
Okay. Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Mr. Moore?
I will defer report. We already talked about the DCIU earlier today.
Okay, thank you. Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council, Mr. Jubelier is absent. He can update us in August. And Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Dr. Babson?
Let me just take our previous conversations as a proxy for, basically, that is the headline of the PSBA these days, is the platform conversation. So, that's it.
Okay, terrific. I thought you were going to mention you're joining the platform committee.
Oh, well, may I mention that I am on the platform committee. And I also checked, by the way, before the previous vote, just so you know, that I can be on the platform committee and be part of the delegate assembly, in case anyone was on the edge of their seat with bated breath.
Okay, and I want to thank again the three board members who are volunteering their time to do the work of being on the delegate assembly. And thank you, Dr. Babson, for volunteering to be on the platform committee, along with Mr. Moore, who volunteered, but there had already been another appointment in the works. So, thank you all for volunteering. I know time is precious. And with that, we'll move to our board announcements. There are almost no potentially July meetings, so we will move to our, an announcement of our August meetings. And those will begin on Tuesday, August 15th, at 5:00 with policy, 6:00 with our finance committee, 7:00 with our facilities committee. And they will be held in the ground floor conference room of the Radnor Township School District Administration Building, 135 South Wayne Avenue in Wayne. Then we, on Tuesday, August 22nd, we will have a 5:00 curriculum committee meeting, a 7:00 government relations and communications committee meeting in the same location as mentioned previously. And we'll be back in this building on Tuesday, August 29th, at 7:00 for our regular monthly business meeting. With that, I'm going to turn to our second public comment of the evening, although there is nobody in the room. So, I'm going to say that we can skip public comment for this evening, since no one's here to make it. And I will make, take a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Monahan?
Second.
Ms. Dunn has a second. All those in favor, those on the phone, are you ready to adjourn? Ms. Duffy, at 3:00 AM, are you ready to adjourn? Everybody? Yes, okay. I'd say, motion passes eight to nothing. We are adjourned for the evening. Thank you very much.